I'd like to call the August 14th Board of Education Business Meetings reporter at 6:03 PM. Everybody, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Let me introduce you to the United States of America, to the great purpose which stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite.
John Linderger.
Here.
Sean Kaiser.
Here.
Dave Tucker.
Here.
Michael Ennisworth.
Here.
Adam Kinski.
Here.
Little Mahoney, can be with us this evening.
Aaron Doherty.
Here.
Thank you.
The exits are to your right, to your left, and behind us to our right. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or amended? Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes six to zero. And please get a motion to accept the minutes of the business meeting held on July 10th, 2023. Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Oh, sorry, I skipped one. Can I please get a motion to approve the annual organizational meeting minutes of July 10th, 2023? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Can I please get a motion to approve the special business meeting minutes of July 17th, 2023? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Last special business meetings last night. Can I please get a motion to approve the special business meeting minutes of July 21st, 2023? Dave? Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject 4.1, reports and presentations. I'll handle it Saturday.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, thank you to the everybody who is there today.
Testing. There it is.
Alright, there you go.
First up, we have the 2023-2024 tax levy, and I'd like Assistant Superintendent Anne LaRoe to the podium to speak to that.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for permitting me to present. Over the years, the Great Lakes School Board has worked very hard to keep the tax increases to a minimum. In keeping with that approach, during the budget cycle, the board worked diligently to keep the levy below the tax levy cap of 3.78. The final numbers reflect the actuals. Given an assessed value increase, the tax rate increase came to 1.76. When we look at the revenues, we can see that in addition to the tax levy, the district receives state aid. We have a fund balance allocation, an influx from debt service reserve, ERS reserves, capital for bus purchases, and interest earnings for a total of our budget, $28,096,185. The increases to taxes are $2.88 over every $1,000 of assessed value. The increase on a traditional $30,000 home is $86.44 with a total estimated tax due before any exemption, star senior, veterans exemption, of $5,009.45.
And just to reiterate that $30,000 is the median assessment rate for Great Lakes Lake. So the average household in Great Lakes is assessed at $30,000.
Yes. And the true value of that home would be $324,000. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Anne.
Thank you. The 2023-2024 Code of Conduct is on tonight's agenda. We had a public hearing at 5:30 this evening. There were no comments or revisions from the public. Just to review and go over what we did internally, we went through and edited for punctuation. We did a full reformatting to make sure that it was a more consistent layout with the bolding and the sectioning and titling of things. We did move several sections around to make it more reader-friendly. We eliminated duplicate information that was really rampant throughout the document. And several non-applicable items. So a lot of things we get from legal and says, put this under your Code of Conduct, and it just kind of got dumped in over the years. So for example, there were some things for high school students in there that we don't have high school students. So those types of things got eliminated. And then we've again reorganized for full information. There is one new section that is being added, and that is on a dress code. So we have added a section that says students are expected to dress and burn themselves in an appropriate manner. They must be dressed in appropriate clothing and protective equipment used during physical education classes, participation in athletics, and science laboratory classes. The following are considered to be inappropriate. And then we added a series. Does this mean, or is this the technology? And there's a series of, I won't worry if I read all of them, but it talks about oversized clothing, masks over the face that's not medical, vulgar images, things that, clothing that may threaten or discriminate against another gender, wearing of hats inside the classrooms, anything that's just a correction to the educational process. Any questions on the Code of Conduct aspect? Also, the board has been, and the district has been in discussions about modified sports teams. As a smaller district, we cannot offer all of the teams that a larger district can offer. And because we don't have a high school, and we send our students to the adjoining, to Chester and to Warwick, our students that, where we don't have a modified team seem to be at a disadvantage in 7th and 8th grade. As there is no district team, nor is there a local town sports league because Warwick has a modified program. So the Warwick teams tend to, where our students go, tend to end after 6th grade because students are enjoying school sports. So what that means is that essentially, our students have to take two years off from a sport, and are therefore unable to progress or practice their skills, or they have to travel, join a travel team or a different regional team with kids they haven't played with before. Principal K. Martin was our athletic director, and I went and met with both Chester and Warwick to explain our problem. And the rule of the state is that schools can only create, can only combine to create one team. We can't send kids to both Chester and to Warwick. So that's the long-term problem that we're working on. Well, what I'm hoping to do is make an exception for K. 8 districts, and I'm hoping to work with other K. 8 districts around the state to do this, to allow K. 8 districts only to merge to create more than one type, more than one team. So that our kids, wherever they're choosing for high school, could join that modified team if they have that sport team. While we work however to advocate that change, which we know is going to take about a year, we have reached out to Chester and Warwick to see if we can do something locally for this school year. So for this school year, we are going to be applying to the Orange County Athletic League at Section 9 to combine teams with Warwick in the, combine teams with Warwick in the fall for football, and in the spring for lacrosse for both boys and girls. But we'll need to vote on that. It will take place in August prior to the start of the school year. Modified sports practices though, don't start until after the start of the school year. So they're not going to be missing anything if we do get this passed. We do have support from both Chester and Warwick in this endeavor. So we're hoping that this will pass, and because Principal K. Martin has been reaching out to other 80s in the area to let them know this vote is coming as well. If it's approved, then we would then work out a contract with Warwick regarding planning and execution details. But just to note, we don't have transportation availability for anyone that would take advantage of this. Somewhere where students play up to their high school and plan on a JV varsity team in the 7th or 8th level, the parents would be responsible for transportation. Any questions on that work? There's some other agenda items this evening. There are several places where we'll be allocating funds to our reserves. We are now going to be fully funding our capital project reserve, the last portion of it that wasn't allocated in the spring 2022 vote. So out of that reserve, we're actually hoping to go out with a project referendum this fall. The facilities committee reviewed that and approved that to move forward to the board level. We're looking at having the vote in October, the day of the October board meeting. In addition, we have the Code of Conduct that I just spoke about. There is a building grade configuration. So when we discussed adding pre-K, if you recall, we didn't think there was a vote in entails. And then this late July, when I was working with the state and submitting some paperwork, they told me, well, have you submitted your grade configuration paperwork to the state yet? And I said, no, no one told me I didn't do. So I went in and found the form, and one of the questions on the form is, provide proof of your board agenda that changes the grade configuration. So that is on tonight's agenda, making our elementary school a pre-K through 3 school, and making our district a pre-K through 8 school district. There's several staffing appointments on here. We have some here in the audience tonight, we're happy to see your faces. There are three openings yet that we have not filled, and one is for a bus monitor, the other is for a lunch and recess aid at the middle school, and then a math leave of absence for six weeks at the beginning of the school year. We are actively seeking out this position. We believe we are in the process and have ideas for who we want for those. We will be looking to have a brief board meeting later in August to get these three votes counted. Questions on agenda items? This summer, we have a lot going on in district. Anyone that's driven by the middle school has seen the busy bees up on the roof. We had two roofs at the middle school replaced. The water panel at the middle school has been replaced, and that should be up and running this week. We upgraded, replaced, and added new cameras throughout the elementary school and middle school. I did have one of our neighbors at the elementary school reach out to me, asking about the new cameras, and am I going to be watching them on the weekend? I assured them that we were not, and it was not pointed at them, and then I told them that once we have things up and running, we will, I will invite her in to review the cameras to make sure. I open that up to any community member that is concerned about our cameras or where they may be pointing. Just reach out to me, and I'm happy to show you the outdoor cameras, in case you're worried about your privacy. And then the, both buildings have a door security project going on. You'll see that picture here. All doors will now be accessed through badges, and we will also have dead bolts that can be engaged from the inside to protect all classrooms from anyone entering with a badge. Any questions on summer projects? I know I've been keeping it updated, I don't make the updates, but... That's it for me, and at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Anne LaRoe, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Ron Mackey, our Transportation Supervisor, who are going to present the board had asked for an update on the electric or zero emission school buses initiative, and where the state is with that, where the region is with that, and where we are with that. So at this time, I turn it over to Ron and Anne.
Hello, and again, thank you for permitting us to present tonight on the electric zero, on the electric zero emission school buses starting the journey.
So in the April of 2022, Governor Hochul enacted the 2022/23 budget. Under the new law, all school districts, purchase or lease school buses will have to start purchasing nothing but zero emission electric buses as of July 1st, 2027. Same goes for private transportation companies that provide contract transportation to those. Then on July 1st, 2035, the mandate becomes fully in effect where districts can only operate electric school buses and can only contract with a contractor operating them.
Additionally, the legislation consider employees. So the Job Act mandates that districts and contractors alike develop detailed workforce development plan that ensures that no employee would be adversely affected by the transition. NYSARDA, the New York State Energy and Research Development Authority, has been tasked with providing technical assistance. They have planned either in July or August to issue a user-focused guidebook for school districts and contractors to develop a zero emission school bus roadmap and guidance. NYSARDA will also support school districts in applying for public and private grants to support efforts in compliance with the mandate. You'll hear a lot about NYSARDA throughout this presentation. The rationale from this, for this mandate as explained by the state is environmentally reducing greenhouse gases is a key to the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. With reference to the equity impact, emissions from school buses tend to have a larger impact on disadvantaged communities. Clean school buses will provide a healthier environment on buses and around them for students, drivers, technicians, and the community. Lastly, the financial impact, over the long term, the state expects clean school buses to cost less to operate and potentially provide a revenue stream for school districts.
So who needs to be involved in this implementation process? There are a lot of individuals that need to be involved. A superintendent as district leader, the business official to ensure funding and coordination, the transportation supervisor for import and outing and driver training, facilities director for physical tests, physical plans, and, physical plan changes will need to be made. The IT department, as the EVs must be able to interface with the charging stations and charge management software. Those chargers will need to be networked. Bus vendor representatives in helping us select appropriate bus and batteries, providing technical training for mechanics and drivers. Energy charging is often paired with the bus vendor for charging software schedules, customer-side upgrades, and power management. And possibly the district engineer and architect to develop site plans and obtain permits, apply for funding, and oversee the site work. And then we also need to be involved with our utilities to ensure that power is available to the site and to perform distribution, distribution upgrades on the utilities. Some of the roadblocks that NYSARDA has to address with us is the availability of vehicles. Other manufacturers can only make so many vehicles per year. Required infrastructure upgrades to support the charging of the buses, the time necessary to charge the buses depending on the route range for out-of-district placements, including special ed, private school students, homeless students, foster care students, field trips and athletics, operating conditions including temperature and elevation, and possibly the underlying infrastructure needed to charge buses when they are at out-of-district events. Implementing the necessary training to operate and maintain the bus and the infrastructure technologies is also required, and of course, funding for all of the above. So to talk a little bit about the different types of buses. Type A's are what we call a cutaway. Van-style, they typically carry out 20 to 25 students. And we typically use these for our students with special needs and on our busies routes. Type C is what you see in a traditional school bus, designed to carry 66 children, possibly more depending on the manufacturer. And type C is what we think of when we think of the conventional big bus. Type D buses are those transit-style buses with the flat noses. You may see them in some of our neighboring districts, but operating them here in Great Lakes with our unique geography makes it a little bit difficult.
On August 3rd, SED released a state aid question and answer sheet to offer some guidance as we wait for NYSARDA to issue the guidebook and roadmap. It answers some questions, for example, transportation aid would apply to the purchase of electric buses, charging stations, and associated infrastructure work. Infrastructure upgrades, engineering drawings, and specifications would be covered by general fund appropriation and would still require the Office of Facility Planning's approval. Some restrictions do apply, for example, trenching and patching for the purposes of wiring and charging station. A transportation aid would be limited at $10,000. So what does that look like? For illustration purposes, we use the 22-23A ratios. Traditionally, the district receives approximately 58% on transportation aid for purchase of buses over five years, and 52% in building aid over 15 to 18 years. SED reports that the district would receive transportation aid on the purchase of electric buses and upgrades for 12 years.
So that 58% is spread over 12 years?
Yes. So if we look at how that, for illustration purposes, applies to one bus, the price difference between a diesel bus at $131.5 and an electric bus at $376,000 is $244,500. That's the difference in the purchase price. The district in this illustration again receives 58% in on each bus over the number of years determined by SED. For the diesel bus, the district receives $15,000 rounded, each year over five years totaling $76,000. And on the electric bus, $18,000 over 12 years totaling $218,000. So that the total final cost to the district of the diesel bus is $55,230 versus $157,920, an increase for the electric bus of $102,690.
For a vehicle. And again, after 12 years, you have to have all that money up front.
Do they anticipate this lasting 12 years?
That's the question. So right now, our fleet's on a 10-year schedule, but our question is, are we now moving to a 12-year schedule? Are they, if we have a 10-year schedule because of insurance purposes, are they going to move to a 12-year schedule? Or are we going to get it for 12 years and have to use them for 10 years? Are they going to last longer than 12 years? That's to be...
Jonathan, the range will last 12 years.
At this time, insurance is sticking with 10-year, um, total value replacement.
So this is an estimation of our fleet schedule, worked out till July 1st, 2035, which would be the deadline to have all of our vehicles operate as electric buses. So working backwards, in red, the district is expected to be fully transitioned to a zero emission bus fleet in 2035. The yellow column represents the first district, the first year that a district can no longer purchase diesel or gas convention buses. I work with the orange column represents the 10-year mark. So the district is traditionally the line of fleet for the 10 years. So if we were going to look to purchase vehicles and get those full 10 years out of them, that would be the last year that we could actually buy, you know, combustion engines or conventional engines.
So if we wait till 2027, 2028, we only get eight years. And also, if we were back up and buy these buses earlier, you're getting less years out of the current buses. You're not getting the full 10 years out of the current buses. So it's a little bit of a cutout up there. The other thing that I wanted to point out with this slide is if you look at the bottom, this is the budget number that we have to put in to afford these numbers. This is a lot more than a 2% jump. So how to fund this, how to build this in? So looking at 278.3 to 303, do we do some infrastructure work here to kind of build this up to be closer to the 900,000? What do we do? And then it goes up to 1.2 for several years, and drops to 8. So all things to be solved, but the budget cannot handle that percentage of an increase without impacting the tax payer.
Where are your slides? I don't know if this is the way to word it, but it looks like you couldn't purchase new gas buses. Can we purchase new gas buses?
I've no answer, though, I just need to make sure my, my three-inch binder man.
I actually have two four-inch binders. So you can't buy anything other than new buses? But there's one of the grants that requires scrappage, but if you want to buy an old bus and scrap it to get the maximum out of that grant, we're going to go into a little bit of the funding, so.
Now, after those years, you can only buy electric buses?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, it's just the way it's worded, but yeah, correct.
Give to us.
So we've heard a lot about financing, just to name a few of the grants and monies available from NYSARDA. The New York Truck Voucher Incentive Program, the P-12 Clean Green Schools Initiative, the Flex Tech Program, and then from the federal and state governments, they have the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the Inflation Reduction Act, and the New York State Clean Water, Clean Air, Greens Job, and Environmental Bond Act. But please note, any of these programs are designed for high-needs communities as decided by the state and the state aid department, and have caveats tied to them. Great Lakes eligibility for the financial supports varies greatly, in some cases, not at all. Our preliminary conversations with NYSARDA, I'm sorry, with the district architects, go ahead, please. CPL appears to think that our first grant application would be for the Flex Tech Program, which we would apply for, which is available to cover 75% of the costs of developing our first clean transportation study. When state aid released that update on August 3rd, they also referenced upgrades to infrastructure. And the current plan to reimburse districts for the costs, as I mentioned, was over 12 years, whatever our transportation ratio is. And they would cover these things that are listed here.
So this process is not necessarily a linear process. This diagram shows a circle, we're trying to envision it more like a web. It's not just about buying a bus, but ensuring that you consider all the infrastructure needs, utility coordination, and fees, maintenance issues not just on the buses but on the chargers themselves, battery use, degradation. So considering the expenses involved in trenching the lots and stalling conduit, et cetera, careful long-term planning would be indicated to avoid having to make expensive expansions over time. Funding opportunities may no longer be available. So there've been several models projected towards implementation that have been proposed by different associations. This was one that was outlined to us by CPL, and it talks about assessing your fleet and doing a comprehensive roadmap in terms of what your needs are going to be. So in terms of a routing assessment, determining the load and range requirements for the chargers. It appears to go over a linear process, but there's a lot of components here. Electrical assessment, what our capacity is over at the bus garage, what types of things we would need to, more power if we would need to bring it in. B2G backup and redundancy options, and the charge management system simulations. Uh, then we have to assess our site and develop a plan for a new parking layout and layout to support the chargers. Uh, putting together budgeting and capital, uh, project financing, determining which federal, state utility incentives are available, and figuring the total cost of the infrastructure vehicles, trainings, and reimbursement amounts. And then finally, uh, putting it together and putting in a phased approach to recommend, uh, which programs maybe you wanna leverage for financial incentives, short and long-term recommendations for bus and battery specifications, charging infrastructure, and utility system upgrades. There's a lot to consider in this process. So where are we now? Uh, we've been working without the NYSERDA roadmap, which we were told we were gonna get sometime in July or August. Uh, in terms of site assessment and plan, we've had discussions with the district-appointed CPL Architecture and Engineering Firm. And they're going to help us identify and procure deep-based assessment funding. Uh, they would be able to assist us in navigating the entire electrification process of the fleet, facility, and infrastructure. And they've shared with us, uh, some of their presentations, including one on assessing the fleet and putting together a comprehensive roadmap. We also did an electric school bus fleet profile with Cornus Technology, who is a partner with one of our bus vendors, Leonard Bus. Uh, they did a routing assessment on our battery sizes and the charger types that they would recommend to cover the routes as they exist today. And they also let us know, uh, which routes they think would require midday charging. And we did reach out to, uh, ONR, and we got some initial report from them on June 30th, 2023. So the next step for us would be to develop a plan to submit to ONR required charging infrastructure and site layout plans. So on our routing assessment that we did with Cornus, you'll notice there's a couple of columns up here. The first three columns represent the standard consumption of the battery rate. Uh, the standard consumption is kind of what we call ideal in terms of flat topography and good weather. Uh, on the right-hand side, you'll see three columns that represent design consumption rate, which is, uh, not, less than ideal situations. So they're talking about the battery degradation rates at 0%, degradation, 10% degradation, and 20% degradation.
So when you look at these chargers, you feel pretty good about kind of where we are, right? Because you think that we do have a lot of mountains and we do have winter weather. So majority of our fleets look pretty good. There's just some concerns potentially here.
So these were the buses. You'll see that the bus is over there where it says 129, 132. And the, uh, the As are the type A buses, and the Cs are type C buses, and the Ms are some of our smaller vehicles. The, the buses identified in green would not require midday charging at the various degradation levels. Whereas the yellow buses, I'm sorry, the buses identified in yellow highlighter are, uh, buses that would probably require midday charging. And those buses would not be available to respond to early dismissal or emergency demands as the afternoon route may require fewer to be added before it can be completed.
So I just wanna reiterate that. These buses, for the most part, are going to have to recharge only midday. So if we have a delayed opening, there may not be enough time between when they're done and when we dismiss at the end of the day. Or if we do a regular dismissal early, there may not be enough. Or if we have a half-day to have school, there most definitely won't be enough. So then you look at superchargers or additional vehicles, and you have to examine that because you have to be able to transport, by law, we must transport, uh, you know, students to the schools when they're outside of service, it's waiting for the school. So you feel good after looking at the last slide, you go to this slide and you go, oh my gosh, this, this, we're, we gotta do some work here. Um, this, this kind of made my jaw drop when we went over it last week.
It sounds interesting. I don't understand why that happens. They want to go and work on it and think it's already... It just wants to figure it out. Uh, you could think of your company having that. Maybe this is what happens when you go in time.
So if you, I don't know how to do that. You definitely want to get an A.
But do you pay a fine?
I don't, I don't know. So a lot of times what they do is they threaten us with holding all eight, and we can't function without eight. Well, we all know what happens in one district that doesn't comply with the mass mandate, right? The state actually showed up at their door and said, no, you're doing this, or like you're shutting down. So not to compare, it's too fair, any kind of initiatives, but you don't, there, there's not an option to not.
I have a good question, Ron. Everything that you're discussing about infrastructure, that's only for like the DPW charging station. Who's looking at the infrastructure, like the roads and the bridges in each community to make sure that these bridges that are, you know, I don't know how, can support an electric bus, considering how much the battery's weight?
Well, I do say this is like peeling away an onion. Every time something comes up, um, we have to marvel at what they're past, because I asked last week, it said, can you guys help identify some of the bridges in the district? And if they have weight restrictions on them? Because with the buses, the batteries will weigh more, uh, weigh a lot more. One of the other things we looked at was, do the lifts that we bought two years ago, will they be able to lift these buses to do repairs?
But I mean, so they're not telling you that you're responsible to go out and check the passing of these bridges, are they, or no?
They're not. The bus is going to and when will they?
There are things we've been advised to take under consideration. Okay, so in terms of our outreach with Arch and Rockland, uh, partnership, um, we did a couple of things with them. Now, ONR presented to the School Boards Association in, um, May. And this is one of their slides that they talked about. So the two things you need to look at are the site feasibility analysis and the rate analysis. To determine if new service or increased capacity is needed, the district needed to submit a plan to ONR. So we did submit them the initial plan. Uh, the other thing we need to think about is the rate analysis. How much is the electricity gonna cost us? At what times of the day are we gonna purchase it? And what is the, uh, the best price to get for those rates?
So something else to consider, that this is property that we lease and we have through a contract that is up every three to four years, every three years. Uh, so this is not our property. So we're paying to put, first of all, is the village gonna let us do this? Then, we're paying to put the infrastructure into this space, but it's not our property. If we then choose not to move forward, please, or the village decides, well, we actually need that space, you can't take the infrastructure with you. So we're paying to build on someone else's property. So what does that mean for the district, for us, for the community, and what are our plans for that? I, I don't know the answer. I'm just saying there's another question, it's another layer on the odds of it.
Okay, so in, in our analysis with Arch and Rockland, uh, they did do an initial survey where we gave them a list of all of the buses and the hours that they drove and the times around on the road. And, uh, it does indicate that we have, the initial analysis, sufficient power to start the fleet transition. That's not to say that we wouldn't need to add power as the fleet grows. But once that existing, uh, capacity is exceeded, utility can, uh, help us determine the capital cost of the need to upgrade.
So we're thinking the recommended next steps are to work with CPL to, to, uh, gain the Flex Tech funds to create a clean transportation study. We want to establish a method to oversee the planning process. Should it go through the Budget Committee, the Facilities Committee, a new committee? We want to continue to gather and share the knowledge that we gain, oversee the clean transportation study, and develop a long-term plan identifying fleet schedules and necessary revisions. And also, we'd like to advocate to change and modify the law.
Can we put that one up top?
Of course.
I mean, what, what can the community do to help support you guys so this, this timeframe can get pushed further along?
We would ask community members to contact our legislators or our organizations, to reach out to the PTA, to NISBA, to everyone, to advocate, to establish a more realistic timeline, to fully reimburse districts for the investments, to develop a fully funded pilot program throughout the state, maybe a couple of them, to look at the power grid, to do those upgrades before they even get to us, to get the electric to the bus garage instead of having us have to pay for it, and to ask for significant, significantly more financing.
So, so definitely advocating directly to your elected officials is what we need. Um, it is important to know, and I'm gonna kind of skip through these slides, but the organizations, NISBA, the Council of School Supervisors, the Association of School Business Officials, the PTA, they are all advocating knowing that this is an unreal, that this is an unrealistic timeline. Um, and so they are advocating. So speak, any organization that you are a part of relative to the state, advocate, speak to your representatives within that organization so they hear us and advocate, and then do your own advocating. That, that is what we need more. So we have to start planning this because as of right now, it's coming and it's written into state law. That means the only way to change it is to state, is to change the law. This is not a recommendation. This is not even New York State Ed. This is New York State law. So we have to change it through advocacy.
I'd like to tell you that, just so that you know, uh, the OCSBA, as the OCSBA President of the Presentation Board, it's been a huge concern. It's been talked about a lot. And there's not a single district that's on board with this. Um, so they're going, they're gonna, they're advocating against it because they can. We're gonna continue to do that. Um, as you will follow this, it's, uh, and it's gonna be more, you're gonna see it more on, uh, in front of burn, and it's coming up. And it's just like Sarah said, it's unavoidable. It's, it's not, nothing, there's nothing to be here about other than hope that the government comes to their senses and realizes that it's absolutely not acceptable. So keep our fingers crossed, just keep advocating. Seriously, get on there. Legislature, legislators right now don't stop, is my best advice.
All right, so the question of how we wanna tackle this, um, kind of as a board, just to go back to that, do you want to create a special electric bus committee? Do you mind having it just at, at the board level, through board workshops? Um, do you want just updates regularly at board meetings, kind of like this? How would you wanna have, see, there, there's a lot of details with this that we need to work on and plan that are kind of easier in committees. But, or can we put it to another committee? It's, it's, it's its own chunk of work. So how would you like to tackle this initiative as a, other than advocating?
I would say the information that we get, we absolutely share with the community. Um, I, yeah, I, it might be us to commit, create another committee with the office. Um, this, I mean, it's in the scope of budget and facilities, but I think it's gonna, it has to be higher budget. It's, that's my thoughts anyway.
Is he saying, is he worried? He's about to think completely, okay?
Yeah, and I think everybody's gonna need to be involved. Uh, I mean, we're gonna have to keep having, you know, monthly updates coming on, you know, about the processes that are going through. It might be usual, second to the bottom, being a cloud over that, if you're creating a...
Well, if you want, what we can do is do, um, but I, I'm gonna say this, and then I'm gonna talk about something you said a few minutes ago. You can do something, or we do a board workshop prior to a meeting. It starts at like 5:00 or 5:15 and kind of works through until 6:00. But I don't wanna miss what Mike said a few minutes ago, which is the community notification and input, right? The only way the committee knows about this is if they're watching these videos. And workshops are not recorded typically. Uh, so we were wanting to make sure that whatever we did in a committee or in a board workshop was, that talked about it in the, in the regular monthly board meeting.
That's nice.
So maybe, uh...
Every month, when the committee's updated, they're almost on time. That's why I think a lot of electric bus commission, whether you wanna call it, is important on the, and we have to, there's something to discuss, and you need to know.
Can you make a committee that's kind of like, um, different, depending upon community? You know, like committees, there's a pressure on the people that are already on committees, right? Adding another one, um, especially if I remember the day, if I've been certain of a small committee, can't ever go to any day time. Maybe committees, is it possible to have a committee where it's like, when people rotate, January, if you sign up for, say, October, and then the next, or, or, or... You can. The issue comes in when there's a ongoing conversation where, like, education, education decision. And I'll just give an example, but the Facilities Committee last week has been on top with this capital project. And they were able to make decisions last week on things and recommendations before, because they've been working on it for a year and a half. But this, so they hadn't known the whole history and explained it to the rest of the board and said to the rest of the board, yes, I fully advocate. Rotating committees doesn't give us that. We could, um, maybe what we can do is workshops. These workshops allow them to pull forward to come if they want. Or it could be a committee, and then just whoever's available can come. But that's three people, one month, or all seven, and you kind of depend on it.
Well, maybe we can just talk about six, seven, eight months, they're on day offs. So, yeah, we can share whatever we have in these workshops or if there's something that...
And I don't, and I don't do a long discussion later?
Yeah. Might be one way to do it.
And then if there's something that requires more than a few minutes of workshop? That way, we're not spending the entire business weekend.
I mean, we can start that way and see if that...
We can do more than that. You want to discuss, we can go that route.
I mean, what if we do like a workshop, and then, you know, if there's any pertinent information, like Mike said, we could discuss that at a board education meeting, so it's announced to the public, what's going on in the board.
I think workshop first, we definitely said, draft, uh, something, you know, a message to all of it. And if from a workshop, we'll know if we got it.
You saw all the stuff that has to be done. It's definitely gonna, it's gonna eventually be there.
Yeah. Right, but this is maybe right now.
Not right now.
It does cover, but it does cover facility, but this is, this is like its own beast. Yeah.
Maybe we should hire a...
Well, so, so and that's what, that's what CPL was trying to do. Um, can we move forward with choosing CPL to do that study? If they've been trying to provide the right money for the study, 5% of that, so that we can kind of get another, whatever. Okay, so, questions? Um, I forgot their name, but, questions, feedback, discussion, any other, anything else that would run by? I'm gonna start, yes. No, I think we need to be jacked up for it.
Well, like I said, this has been a huge topic of conversation at the OCSBA. And there's not one district that, that's ready to take on all of this, and they're going to be advocating.
Yeah, but I've been wondering if other districts, other boards can write letters to support writing them.
I think that's probably... I don't know, I, that Senator's focus, this came up, the analysis, all the way from the situation. And he's, he's working to figure out what he's doing back there, to draw up this law. He voted for this one. I don't know why he voted for it.
So what happens is, it was tied to the budget. And so, and this wasn't a separate law that was passed. It was one of those, um, in the budget, or you pass the budget, you have, yes. So that's what I...
Now, Ron, do you guys meet, uh, other transportation departments to discuss this? I'm in a forward gesture.
So I'm on the board of the New York State Association for People's Transportation. I've been captain, president, head of, for a few years. I've been chapter president of Hainault County for about three years. You're Hudson Chapter. We have some great associations. We have a local group, but we also have statewide group, just like what we're talking about, our other associations. But you have to remember, those memberships are pretty much limited to school districts. So our association has 600 members, not really a very big voice when it comes to, you know, saying, hey, you know, your league is a little bit different and all the districts have, were all being asked to remain in bed and will at the same time. And what, it's not being taken into account is that each district has its own unique personality and issues and problems, like I was directly coming with the village. So these things are really not being taken fully into account. So as well as everything else, you know, three, we have an association, but there's, we're going to advocate, you know, it needs to be.
And have you spoken to any of the other organizations, like your, any of them? Everyone wants the law changed. There are organizations that are in, at the local, regional, and state level, all are working to change this stuff. That goes back to this, right?
Yes, it's our association. People notice, we did kind of gloss over some of this stuff, but this is our map, we're associated with gentrification, and our executive director puts a comment in the climate leadership, maybe protection act, when that came out. And again, this came out as part of the budget, as Sarah said, so none of us really saw it coming until it was in writing. We were like, really? So we are kind of in a lot of shock too.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, there's no board reports for OCSA or Chester or anything from Forward?
Just to remind parents to make sure their online accounts are updated entering the school year for Warwick Valley High School, especially anyone that's trying out for fall sports, which I think starts next week, either the 17th or the 21st, depending on, the 17th, yeah, 17th is this week. Some sport tryouts start on the 17th, some start on the 21st. So just to remind you to update all your physical and other online paperwork in the parent website. And for parents of seniors, there's a lot of information coming out. It's overwhelming, I'm overwhelmed, but make sure that you're up, you're looking at your emails a lot and going through them. Check your spam, because a lot of the emails from my seniors have been going to like my junk account, so I would check that. There's a lot of updated, like upcoming events and things. I know August 29th, if you're a senior at Warwick High School, is planning on driving at all this year. There is a mandatory parent and student meeting on August 29th. Check your email for the times, you do have to sign up via Google Doc. And that's for anyone, any child that plans on getting licensed at any point in the year. Not only does the student need to attend the meeting, a parent also this year.
Just aside though, we did one of our, agreed with like Warwick High School students to approve to graduate a year early, so they're doing, they're four years, they're three years. So they were going to be a junior, but they're still here and graduated this year. So that's really exciting.
And I know today there was an email that came out for incoming freshmen for Warwick Valley. There's a school orientation on August 30th that you have to go on and sign up for. And Ian's not here. Audit Committee?
He really needs her before he started, or had finished their district testing. And so far, we're looking very good.
Facilities, I think Sarah covered almost everything that's ongoing right now for facilities. Budget? And then I don't see anybody here from the PTSA. And then anybody have any updates for the village ring thing? No? Okay, subject 6 dot 1, privilege of the floor. Anybody? No? No fakers? Okay, moving on. Subject 7 dot 1, now please get a motion to approve the July 31st, 2023 financials and monthly warrants as presented. Michelle, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 2, now please get a motion to confirm tax rules and authorize the tax levy as presented. Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 3, now please get a motion to adopt the district code of conduct as presented. Michelle, Erin, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 4, now please get a motion to authorize the execution of the 2022, 2023 APR implementation certification form as presented. Erin, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 5, now please get a motion to approve the elementary school grade level configuration as presented. Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 6, now please get a motion to approve the appropriation of funds for the Capital Reserve Fund as presented. Mike, Erin, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 6 to 0. Okay, that's what was in the, any discussion? That's the October.
That's the October, because the cost of the increase so much is going to be the same as that because we voted on 2022, trying to get everything, the project, everything.
I mean, it was already approved by the community.
They all want it.
We already had the ones.
No impact to taxpayers.
And subject 7 dot 7, now please get a motion to approve the capital project proposition to appear on the ballot for the October 16.13 special district meeting vote as presented. Erin, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 8, now please get a motion to amend the Board of Education business meeting calendar as presented. Michelle, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 9, now please get a motion to approve the appropriation of funds for the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund. Dave, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 10, now please get a motion to approve the appropriation of funds to the Employee Benefit and Food Liability Reserve Fund as presented. Michelle, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 11, now please get a motion to approve CPL to provide topographic survey as presented. Mike, Patty, and just so you guys know, that, they're going to be doing that on the fields here and then also at that elementary school where we have the issue of the border coming into this school. That's required to figure out how to fix both issues and see if there's anything causing the border. So any, all in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 12, now please get a motion to approve the Orange Bowl's third school district's health plan for our municipal agreement as presented. Michelle, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 13, now please get a motion to approve the non-resident tuition rates as presented. Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 14, now please get a motion to approve the private school transportation request for the 2023, 2024 school year as presented. Mike, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 7 dot 15, now please get a motion to approve the school position agreement with Kanye Pediatrics as presented. Erin, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 8 dot 1, now please get a motion to appoint Erica Arieta as elementary education teacher as presented. Dave, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 8 dot 2, now please get a motion to amend the probationary experience of Cynthia G. Ordana as presented. Mike, Erin, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 8 dot 3, now please get a motion to accept the resignation of Reese Williams as lunch recess aide and appoint as teaching assistant as presented. Mike, Erin, any discussion? Congratulations. All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0.
Welcome to the full time.
Uh, subject 8 dot 4. Now please get a motion to accept the resignation of Emily Creighton as school substitute and appoint as teaching assistant as presented. Mike, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Congratulations. Uh, subject 8 dot 5, a motion to, now please get a motion to accept the resignation of Kimberly Correll as food service helper and appoint as a part-time lunch recess aide as presented. Dave, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion passes 6 to 0. Subject 8 dot 6, now please get a motion to accept the resignation of Alexis Union as lunch recess aide as presented. Mike?